...projects, say, nothing like an arterial intersection improvement, but any little thing. We did a qualifications-based selection, complied with the state law, and selected a variety of firms who are more or less on-call. So they have a million-dollar threshold. That does not mean they're getting a million dollars. In fact, that doesn't mean they're getting anything. There's one of the firms, and I hate to do this, but it was an accident. There's one of the firms on that list that has been on the list for a year and has not gotten a single dollar. They haven't gotten any work just because it just didn't work out for them. It's core engineering. They're a very good firm. There's nothing against them. It's just when we have projects that, a small project that comes up, we look on the list and pick the firm that's best suited to do it and say, "We've already pre-qualified. We've already selected these firms. We can just grab them and contract directly with them." We're talking ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars. The other advantage is, a lot of times, we've got ADOT doing a lot of these grants, these projects. They've got their own on-call list, and it varies. It's kind of complex because they've got like forty or fifty on-call lists. What I do, and I've been very successful at this, is their procurement people are very rigid and bureaucratic and fascist. But what I do is I say, "Okay, you guys pick whoever you want to. Just make sure it's one of the people we have on our on-call also." And that way, we can dovetail pretty, and we've been pretty successful at that. So Dibble is doing, Rittuck Powell is doing the Maricopa-Castro Grand Highway. Dibble is doing the Porter Road Improvement. Those are actual ADOT contracts, but we've got on-calls with them, and if we need to do something little, we could jump out at that. It really saves us efficiency, I guess, let me get to the bottom line here. It saves us efficiency when we have to do little projects. We don't have to go out and do a full procurement, which would take a few months and cost four or five thousand dollars all by itself for something that might be a five-thousand-dollar project. Sorry if that's a long-winded answer. We used to do one council item and just bring the whole gaggle of them forward on one item and just, there's been some changes at the State Capitol. We had to bring them separately. I'm sorry. It looks like a lot, but they're all just renewals.
Thank you, Bill. I think that helps a lot. And would you also talk about the funding? Because the item talks about funding and will be addressed on a one-by-one issue. So talk a little bit about that, and is it in the budget? Is it used other funds? That type of element.
Excellent question. Through the mayor, Councilman Smith, there is no funding associated with these right now. So what this does is this means we have procured them. They're not doing any specific work for us. If we have a project that comes up, either because it's in the budget or because we win a grant or something like that, that thing will have the, so, well, we've already done the north side of, but let's say that we hadn't done the north side of Smith, Inc., from Chase to, that's a hundred-thousand-dollar design. We want to do that. That's pretty small to go out and procure for. Instead, what I would do is I would come, bring a separate item to, I'd look at the list, pick the one who was doing, in fact, I think that's what we did, is we looked at the one that was the best suited, took the hundred thousand dollars, and when we bring the individual contracts forward, those are the ones that have funding associated with them. So as I said, with core engineering, unfortunately, not to be confused with core construction. Unfortunate naming. I should have known better. So we did an annual last year. There was no funding associated with it. They didn't do any work. They didn't get any money. If we have individual projects, those individual projects will have their own funding source, and that's where they will be paid for, and the specific funding. So it could be HERF, could be federal grant, could be, it could be coming from anywhere.
That's perfect. Thank you. I think that will help them a lot.
Any other questions, council, on this particular item or others? Anyone? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That moves us beyond item 3.1 and on to item 3.2. Mayor and city council should hear reports or on meetings and/or conferences attended by the council. Council, time is yours. Yes, Councilmember Wade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August the 11th, I had the opportunity to represent the city at the NAMBY, the Native American Basketball Invitational opening ceremony, and it was very, very well done, very nice. We had young people, young basketball players, boys and girls from all over the United States, even as far away as New Zealand. They had a team there, and I understand the New Zealand team comes on a regular basis as well, so it was great. About thirty-five, about thirty-five-hundred people there at the ultra start, and it was very good. And then I had an opportunity myself, and Councilmember Brown was there as well, got a chance to take pictures with A.C. Green, who is one of the, I guess he's one of the founders or supporters. And it was very good. Then later on, got a chance to attend the Canal County Transportation Safety Plan public meeting. It was well-attended. I think the information was well-received as well. A lot of input from the community, from Councilmember Freddie, had the opportunity to share some ideas or things with people as well, so it was real good. And then on, that was actually on the 12th of July. And then I also had a chance to attend the Chamber of Commerce meeting with City Manager House, and so that horse, I'm sorry. And that was good, too. I was, I don't know if he remembers, but I was his guest at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast, although I remember as well. We had, that was in place of our one-on-one sessions that we have an opportunity to have, so thanks for the invitation. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Oh, sorry. Attended the debate there on Saturday that was put on by the Junior Service of America students, along with Maricopa Monitor and Hey Maricopa TV. That was very good. The young people did a great job. The young president is, he's very sharp. He handled it very, very well. And there was no kicking and screaming or anything, so we didn't have to go through that, but it was very well done, very well handled. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember, Councilmember Brown.
On the 27th, I attended the annual MAG recognition affair. And at that time, they honored the outgoing chairman, Mayor Mack of Buckeye, and the incoming chairman, Mayor Gail Barney of Queen Creek. They also had a special lifetime achievement for Dennis Smith, the executive director, who had been there eon years, and it was a beautiful tribute to him. He's really touched. And that was a great affair. On the 12th, I attended the League's Budget, Finance, and Economic Development Committee, where we had formed six reforms that we might take to the building association, which relates to the impact fees, I think. Last time I spoke to you, we were dealing with the impact fees, which is getting a very big problem with smaller cities and towns especially. We had, as a group, the committee decided that these reforms might be a bit severe. Builders might take a bridge at that. So instead, we decided to kick it off to Ken Strobe, our executive director, to approach them and see what they might be amenable to. On the 11th, I, well, Henry's already mentioned about the NAMBY group. I did attend that. It was well-attended. And in addition to the numbers that he mentioned, I was told there were three hundred tribes represented, which was great. Great turnout. Great music, as a matter of fact. Great music. That's it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Brown. Vice Mayor Chappell.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 29th, I was there for our monthly game night at Copper Sky. I want to give a special thanks to Francis Soto, who is the president of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. We're trying to get a diverse audience to attend, and we had some Spanish-speaking adults there. Also, Priscilla Benke with Beas and Coalition came with some of her folks, and we had forty-two people there that night. So if you're looking for something fun to do that's free on a Friday night, the last Friday of the month, 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. at Copper Sky, we have open game night, so come and enjoy and socialize and meet some new people. On July 4th, with many of my fellow council members, I was one of several thousand at the Great American Fourth event. I want to give kudos to Community Services, Mike Riggs, Nisha Whitman, Nathan Elliott and staff for a job well-done. It was a good crowd. The weather cooperated. It was hot, but it was nice. Great fireworks presentation, a lot of good entertainment, so thank you for doing that. And then also, this past Saturday, I went to Coffee with the Chief at the Copper Sky substation. We talked about school safety. Those of you may remember, we did a forum at MUSD a few months back to talk about school safety. This was an update from the chief as to what Maricopa PD's been doing. They're in the middle of an assessment of all the schools in the city of Maricopa and trying to be proactive in addressing some of the safety needs and concerns that face our schools, our teachers, and our community. The good news is, we're doing a good job. Maricopa PD has done a very thorough job. They've got some ideas in place. They're regularly talking to the folks at the school district and the schools, so hopefully they'll implement some of their recommendations. That's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else at this time? That'll take, item 3.3. The mayor and city council should hear a presentation.
... recommendation of... ... overview of...
Perfect. Thank you, Martin.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Rebecca. How are you?
So I presented last week to planning and zoning, and this is the full presentation, but you've seen a lot of the slides already, so I'll skim through some and just give the highlights and focus a little bit more on the plan itself. I think you already know who I am. I've been here twenty times already. But I'll just jump to the next steps. We're now completing the housing plan. We have the final draft in review with the city, so that should be available this week. And then the next step is implementation. I've been on this for a year. Developed, assisted, and a lot of renters in Maricopa. There are a lot of small households and singles in Maricopa, and they don't have a housing option that is necessarily appropriate because more than ninety-nine percent of homes are single-family homes, three-plus bedrooms. So that poses a lot of challenges for different household types. Young people, older adults, single people, persons with disabilities, and then, of course, persons with low to moderate incomes who can't necessarily afford a single-family home. And I think I mentioned this last year, but my understanding is, the situation is even more dire. There's a shortage of rental housing overall. So a normal, healthy rate is around seven percent, seven to nine percent, and you can see, back at last year, it was 4.7 percent. So regardless of a house or an apartment, there just isn't enough rental housing. And just to illustrate where renters live, you can see that there aren't as many renters living in Maricopa because there are fewer options, but surrounding Maricopa, there are a good number of renters, and we don't have it in this presentation, but it's because a lot of them come into Maricopa for work, so they try to live as close as possible. And this clearly illustrates the very different housing types. Oh, thank you. Where ninety-nine, well, ninety-seven percent are single-family, stick-built, another 2.3 percent are mobile homes. So pretty much all housing is single-family. One of the issues that came up frequently in the focus group meetings and in the surveys is the need for senior housing. And in fact, the last time I was here, a woman, a resident, came up to me and said, "I don't know what to do when I retire because I can't afford, on my fixed income, to stay here. So please figure out a way to add housing that, you know, a single person could find And this is an interesting graphic. It shows how non-family households, which is single persons or roommates, live in single-family homes, and this is pretty unusual compared to other communities. And then, of course, workforce housing. We tend to think of affordable housing, or oftentimes, people think of affordable housing as public housing or deeply subsidized, but we're really talking about anywhere from somebody working at Starbucks all the way to your starting-salary software developers. So people earning, households earning less than fifty thousand is about the threshold in the Phoenix metro area, and there's limited housing options for those households here. And this is an illustration of starting salaries and different job types, and you can see that it's not just service industry workers, but people you need in your community, firefighters, teachers, home health aides, and where the affordability gap is. And we can sum it up by saying that we need more apartments, we need smaller units, town homes, condos, to accommodate the very different types of households who live in Maricopa. And then with that, the next step is, we started working with the housing committee to figure out what that means in terms of the built environment. So you have these housing needs. How do you build housing for these different household types, and where do you build it? And then we go back to the general plan, which called for a village center, walkability, higher density, and this is important, it's an important step, because if you just say we need this type of housing, you often end up with the common, big-box retail, and then big multifamily units surrounding the big-box retail, and you don't really add value to your community, whereas if you can focus your resources in a particular way, you can create a village center, more walkability, a pleasant place to be. So that was the next step in translating housing needs to the housing plan. So the committee met, I want to say, five or six times, working on the vision statement, goals, and strategies. I know we've gone through this before, so I won't belabor it and read through all of the elements, but we did work very hard on the housing plan, coming up with the goals and strategies, and ultimately, the strategies were translated into action items. I'll highlight the key parts that came out of the process for goals. One was to make sure that development is in a sustainable way that adds value and doesn't overwhelm the community, that the community keeps its small-town charm while still providing diverse housing, also that it's done in a way that is an economic development driver, meaning if we're going to build, we should build in a way that makes the community more attractive, makes people want to move to the area, makes employers want to come to the area. Some of the innovative concepts that came out of the plan are this idea of middle housing, which is not a single-family home and not a three-hundred-unit apartment complex, but all of the in-betweens. So you can have small complexes, you can have fourplexes or duplexes, you can have homes with granny flats in the back. You can also have live-work lofts or the main-street-type development, where you have retail on the ground floor and apartments above. So there are lots of different design standards that you can use to enhance the built environment. And then we developed a concept plan based on the first charrette. The housing committee went through a prioritization of sites, and as the first priority designated city center as the site that we would work with and design because the city owns the land and it's, for the most part, shovel-ready. So we worked with WRT, which is an architecture and planning firm out of San Francisco and Philadelphia, to come in and do the first charrette. We had, I want to say, thirty to forty residents come in over a three-hour period. The designer, who's the principal of the firm, worked with residents designing where things could go within this site, and it was done to scale. And then with that information and input, developed the first concept plan for the site. We looked at some of the precedents and design elements in communities in Arizona and also nationally for best practices. We also looked at different types of density and how you need higher density to support retail. So if you want to have a walkable, live-work-play-learn environment, you need higher density than single-family homes. Some of the main concepts that came out of the charrette, and these were all from the residents and participants, but obviously, the village center, having a downtown area for Maricopa, was repeated. Also, having more opportunities for small businesses, so new retail and commercial space, having civic space or gathering space, having a parade route or promenade for residents to walk through. All of these are public amenities that can support the development of apartments and And this was the initial concept design that was developed by the participants with the retail along Bolin Road with apartments above and around, and access towards City Hall. So that would be a new road leading into the City Hall area. There would be a beautiful promenade, again, lined with retail and outdoor space, gathering space, and then culminating in a civic space with some performance area and a public lawn. And this is all done to scale, and WRT developed what the development capacity is based on height, floor-area ratio, and we can support a good amount of development. We focused, for this plan, we focused on the first phase, which is outside of the floodplain. And you can see that area dotted in green. And within that footprint, we're calling it Phase One, but obviously, with 500 to 800 units, this would be multiple phases. But this is a realistic first step in what can be developed here. And this is 500 to 800 homes, 130,000 square feet of retail. And in the study, it's broken out into different number of stores based on sizes, and then sixty-five thousand square feet of office space or civic space. And this is the rendering that WRT worked on based on this landmass. And again, this is to scale, focusing on this site. And again, when you look at the report, you can see the breakdown of the Phase One and a cost estimate, including infrastructure. And of course, that will ultimately be dependent on the development that you move forward with and who the developer is, but this is based on industry standards. And so the next step, which is outlined in the strategies as action plans or action items, I believe there are twenty-eight total, but we can prioritize these six, which sums it up for the next steps, certainly for the next year. We need to develop guidelines for multifamily and townhomes in a way that enhances the community. We need to look at ways to do a public-private partnership, because obviously, the city is not in the business of building housing, but you want to have a say on how it's developed, how it's designed, and what features. And so figuring out what you can use to incentivize developers to work with you. Also, talking to other departments, because this started out as a housing plan, but ultimately, if we're developing a village center, it's not a housing project anymore. It's housing, transportation, economic development, and so all of the different departments need to coordinate for the next steps moving forward. Also, we need to develop a master plan. Right now, we have a concept plan, but somebody to come in and say, "Okay, this is what's possible. These are the phases. This is how much each phase is going to cost. This is what public money is needed. This is what private money is needed. This is what can be leveraged." So that could be done separately, or it can be done along with a developer, a solicitation for a development partner who can bring in a planning firm to work with the community to come up with an overall plan. And I think this typically takes about six months. And then with that, you'll have a clear phasing plan that can break it down into, say, the funding streams that are coming out of the state, coordinating what the max number of units you can do per year, and then create a plan going forward with the developer that you choose to work with. Another option is, you can have a master developer who then has other developers working on different elements, so it doesn't necessarily have to be one. And then ultimately, you'll need to change your zoning to be a form-based code specific to the site. So we know in a village center, it's not going to be single-family housing and strip malls. It's going to be a lot of different types of development, and so to make sure that it's cohesive, to make sure you have very strong design standards, materials, setbacks, design elements, and then also having your public space coordinated. Sorry, I set my alarm, and I finished just in time. And yeah, that's the plan. Tazee has the, what should be the final draft. The city's going through one more round to see if there are any other pieces missing, but I'm pretty excited about where we've come. Oftentimes, housing plans just have a list of recommendations, and then we don't know what to do going forward, but here, I think we have a really good starting point for adding the housing that's needed in a way that supports the vision for a village center. So are there any questions?
Questions, council, on this? I know we've been over it many times, so, yes, Councilmember Wade.
Just for granted, thank you very much for your presentation. Always, when I see it, it's always great. Can you give us, just a wag, on a timeline, where we would go from what we look like now to what we would look like then?
It would depend on how you wanted to move forward with the plan. If you wanted to move quickly, then I would imagine having the design standards for multifamily that would be applicable for the entire city, but for this particular site, you could either issue an RFP or an RFQ for a master planner/architect to work with the community to develop a final site plan, or you can work with a developer or solicit a request for qualifications or request of interest from developers who would bring on their own planner. But because it's ultimately going to be a public-private partnership, you want to make sure you have sufficient community involvement, also because you will most likely be using your future CDBG dollars. There are certain requirements when using federal funds that includes a community engagement process. But I would say, six to nine months, you should have a clear plan, ready to go, looking for funding for their first phase.
Questions, council?
To many people.
In fact, it is. Good evening again, mayor and council. So as you know, we are looking at, how do we improve our transportation between here and Phoenix on 347? So what we have been kind of fond, what easily rolls off the tongue, is we're going to add lanes, we're going to widen. Well, we don't know that that's actually the easiest fix, so there's a lot of different pieces at play here. And so there is now, just starting, the scoping study to figure out, okay, what is it we're going to do to, for long-term, for these improvements for 347? And MAG is actually the ones who are managing that project and handling all that. You may notice that we have an item on the consent agenda tonight for contingency funds to help fund part of that, and that is the piece that actually comes through Maricopa. Outside of that, we were, it was going to stop right at the line. So tonight, the project manager from MAG, Quinn Castro, is here to present this to you, and she can explain a lot of this much better than I can. So with that, I'll let her take over.
Thank you. Quinn, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council. So tonight, I am presenting to you on a scoping study that MAG has going currently in our work program for State Route 347, from State Route 238 up to I-10 Maricopa. So it's a scoping study and Pell statement. David warned me this could be tricky. Am I hitting this wrong? It's right like that? Thank you. Just here? There we go. Okay, so this is an overview of the study. The intent of it is to identify transportation needs along 347. So starting at the interchange with Queen Creek and I-10, all the way down, continuing to the boundary with the city of Maricopa. The study will then provide an implementation strategy for the identified needs. So whether that is lane widening, grade-separated intersections, the intent is really to address the volume and the crashes along the corridor. The implementation strategy would kind of be more help in terms of when-to, how-to with these projects and where to invest our best dollars for the infrastructure needs that are identified. The final item that we would want out of this study is a planning and environmental linkages statement. So this is something from FHWA that kind of implemented around 2014, and the intent of this is to get all of the stakeholders on the same page. And the intent of this is to get all of the stakeholders on the same page early on in the process, looking at environmental, community needs, economic goals, and that'll help to inform the environmental process once the project has been scoped. Kind of one of the things that you get out of that is building relationships with the stakeholders, so everyone has a chance to discuss what their needs and wants are early on and have a plan going forward so that when there is, you know, changes in project manager, changes in members of FHWA or ADOT, that you can have that documentation of where the project started. So as I said, the study scope starts in Maricopa County, so the MAG region, at the I-10 interchange. It's known right now that the interchange does need improvements, but as to what those are, we're looking for a consultant to help us determine that and then evaluate the potential need for grade separations at the intersection, so in particular rigs in Casablanca. David asked me to bring this up on my way down here. I left myself an hour and 45 minutes to get here. It took me about 20 minutes longer than that coming from MAG, and I had thought I'd be about a half an hour early, and boy, was I wrong. A little embarrassing there. And then we know that Pinell County RTA has identified a widening project. We're asking the consultant to give us some geometry as to what that widening would be. So are we looking to widen to the inside? Are we looking to widen to the outside? What would that mean for the intersections if they stay at grade or if they are grade separated? And then the potential scope additions. So city of Maricopa, it makes sense to add on to 347, this project in particular, since we will have a consultant looking at what the needs are, kind of the traffic flow through the city itself, because we see that as a problem as well currently. Traffic just doesn't flow the way that it should. Volumes are very high, and we've asked them to evaluate an Arizona Parkway. I'm not sure if a lot of people have heard of that. We don't have any in the MAG region currently. There's a couple in Tucson, and it's indirect left. So if you're from anywhere outside of this region, you may have seen those. So looking forward, we're looking to draft some memorandums of understanding, first between Pinell County and MAG, second between, hopefully, city of Maricopa and MAG, pending the funding, of course. We would then update the project limits in MAG's work plan to incorporate the full city of Maricopa limits, issue a request for proposals for consultants, and then kick off the project, hopefully later this summer. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Council, questions? Councilwoman Smith, Councilwoman Menfried.
Thank you, Quinn. So you've introduced a new term, at least I had never seen it or noticed it before, Arizona Parkway. Can you define what that is?
So an Arizona Parkway is a way to get continuous flow. Okay, so I'm an engineer, I'm sorry about this. It's a two-phase signal, meaning that you remove the left turns from the intersection, and you move them outside of that so you can keep traffic flowing through. And you provide a left-turn bay beyond that that would have a U-turn and then a right-turn. So indirect lefts are what they're sometimes called, or if you're from the Midwest, a Michigan left.
Okay, so it's not the name of a street?
No, no. It's a type of roadway facility.
It's a type of road, and we have been introduced to that before, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Menfried.
Quinn, thank you for the presentation. Question for you. If we start midsummer or summer, you said, then when are we, how long are you looking at for it?
So generally, we add, we give the time of about 18 months for a study like this. And then depending on what the consultant comes with their schedule, it could be shorter than that.
Great, thank you.
Does the peel run simultaneously as the rest of the scoping study? I mean, because of the importance of bringing the different stakeholders together, specifically ADOT and GRIC and Maricopa County and Pinell County and City of Maricopa, and the list goes on and on and on.
Yes, so I will tell you that we have already had those discussions with ADOT, with this, excuse me, Pinell County, Maricopa County. Obviously, MAG is involved with these member agencies a lot, and we've had discussions as to what this project should be, and we've asked for representations from each of those groups to act as a reviewer on for the RFP and then a stakeholder member going forward. Sometimes we call that Planning Partners Group or Evaluation Committee.
Perfect. Other questions, council? Obviously, just as Quinn said, you know, pending funding, you know, from our request, the BFO had submitted this, or this had been discussed in the BFO, as $150,000 that we would pull for this project if we'd gotten to this point, which we knew we were working towards. The council approved this and the approval of the budget, and so we appreciate MAG and all the work that they're doing, because as a member agency of MAG and being, you know, the closest neighbor to, obviously, you know, Maricopa County is a Pinell County, Maricopa County touch, and heath the river, and being an ADOT road, we knew from the beginning this is a complex topic and a complex subject, but it's got to start somewhere. And so having MAG act as that intercessory between those two massive agencies of GRIC and ADOT, and then ultimately, the city of Maricopa kind of helping lead that challenge with, you know, funding from MAG, funding from ADOT, I think it's from ADOT or FHWA, and then funding from us. It really brings that spirit together to send that thrust forward, to move this project in the direction that we've been talking about for the last two years. And then coupled with the PRTA, and we'll talk about this later, but I'm going to those oral arguments tomorrow to see how that goes. So, you know, at the end of the day, the idea is if we can get all these things to align, we'll be making good headway. So thank you very much.
If I may, I would like to tell you that we do have $150,000 from MAG's work program, and then Pinell County RTA has dedicated $150,000 themselves as well.
Perfect, perfect. Awesome. Any other questions, council? Thank you very much, Quinn. We appreciate it. Very helpful. And then our final presentation this evening is the Mayor and City Council are here presentation by Chris Camacho. I don't think Chris is here, but I see Brad and Tim from the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. And so this is for the FY '18, '19 action items and the membership agreement with the city of Maricopa. And Denise, take it away.
Yep. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. We have two GPEC representatives, because that's what it takes to cover Camacho's speech. So we have Brad Schmidt with GPEC. He's the Senior Vice President of Business Development, and he'll discuss GPEC's mission, the services to the community, as well as the benefits to the city of Maricopa. And then Tim Borsette is the Director of Government and Community Affairs, and he'll go over a specific initiative known as a smart region vision. So take it away, Brad.
Mayor, council, thank you so much for having us down tonight. It was great to get out of Phoenix and come down here. I just wanted to do a quick introduction. Obviously, you all know Denise Erhart. She is one of our most engaged economic development directors on a team that I manage, which is all of the economic development directors in the region. We have 22 total. Denise is there every month. She's a great part of our organization, and we really appreciate her input on things, as well as mayor serves on the board for the city, as well as the mayors and councils, the mayors and supervisors council, as well as the GPEC ambassador program. A man wears many hats, but we're greatly appreciative of him and everything that he brings to GPEC. And so again, we just really appreciate the time. I'm going to turn it over to Brad, who's going to go over a business development update, discuss some trends, and then I'll just hit something briefly at the end. So thank you again.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I think I need to go to the back there to move forward. But again, as Tim mentioned, we're pleased to be here this evening, and we apologize that Chris cannot join us this evening, but had another CEO dinner that came up and needed to attend that. But we're pleased to be here today and to talk through a little bit of the activity that we've been seeing, and we'll talk about, you know, your investment in the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, what that means, and what we kind of look forward to moving forward. That's where I'm pointing to, but that's, okay. You can go one more. So if you don't know GPEC, that's shame on us, but we're obviously the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. We're the regional economic development entity that represents the county and 22 cities, basically every city in the metro Phoenix area, and we have about 160 private sector investors. Right now, we're probably about a little over 60% privately funded, and the rest comes from the public sector. So it's a good blend, works well for our communities and the county to get a more than, you know, one-to-one match on the revenues that they provide, and those revenues are matched by the public sector investors that we have, that are part of GPEC and really are involved to see the region grow and grow smartly. Since '89, in our conception, we've assisted almost over 800 companies to locate in the metro Phoenix area, over 135,000 jobs, almost $15 billion in new capital investment to the area. I'm looking towards a dark window. It's kind of like, I feel like I'm in like a FBI room. So services that we provide to companies, and I was just doing this this morning with a manufacturing company that was looking at doing some food manufacturing in the regional market, provide a lot of in-depth market analysis and data on the labor force, a cost of labor, availability of labor, where that labor lives, based on, you know, different occupational codes, et cetera. And we provide that kind of data on a daily basis to companies that are considering the area, and we'll talk a little bit more about how much of that we do on a daily basis as well. Operational costs, obviously, as companies are looking at potential operations centers here in the metro Phoenix market, they're probably also considering other regions and states as well. We come up against Dallas quite a bit. We come up with, against Salt Lake and Denver, Reno, Las Vegas, many other competitor markets that do a great job and are out there like we are on a daily basis, marketing their regions and cities and states on a national and international market. One thing that we do, I think we do very well, is connecting companies to key resources in the community. So as companies come in, they want to talk with other major employers to talk about their successes in the region. They want to talk with ASU. They want to talk with the community colleges. They want to find out, you know, what the labor force is like now from some of the existing employers in the market. They also want to hear about, you know, what the universities and community colleges, and even at the, you know, K through 12 level, what is being done to address labor needs long-term as well. We obviously help companies get to market as quickly as we can. We work with your, the economic development directors and all the communities and help those companies get through permitting, entitlements, and so forth, get their CFOs and get up and running, and get to hiring people and making what they do or doing what they do and doing it fairly quickly. Work with your, the communities, and again, the economic development directors, and helping those companies find available real estate. So it's available buildings, land, whatever that company needs to kind of get up and running on a fairly quick basis. Economic impact analysis is something that we do quite a bit for communities as they are working with companies that are considering their city. Many times, they'll be asked to look at potential assistance options, and we can take those projects, that company's project, plug them into a economic database, and really kind of give the community a good idea of what that project will mean to them in terms of direct revenues and also indirect revenues long-term. And last but not least, on the economic policy side, work with the mayors and council members, elected officials at the county, and even at the legislature and governor's office to look at, you know, how we compete nationally and internationally, and what, you know, annually review our current economic programs and kind of determine where we stand on a national and international basis. Obviously, Maricopa's been a great partner of ours, and we certainly appreciate your support and investment over the years. Just a quick regional results summary from the last couple of years. In terms of payroll, you'll see there, this last fiscal year, over $535 million in new dollars in payroll to the region versus, you know, just under $380 million the previous fiscal year. So we're seeing companies bringing more jobs and higher-wage jobs to the area as well. You see a little bit, about 8,300 jobs, almost similar to the year before. Actually, as of June, that's as of June 21st. As of the end of June, I think it was around 8,500. But you'll see there are a lot more in the high-wage jobs. So we continually welcome all types of business to the metro Phoenix area, but we certainly, you know, try to target those companies that pay a little higher wages. So they averaged $65,000 last fiscal year. We had 43 locates and a little over a billion dollars in capital investment to the area. We truly believe that regional success and regional efforts lead to regional success. And again, we are pleased with our continued partnership with the city of Maricopa. You'll see there, when a company selects any location within the greater Phoenix area, those employees that work at those areas don't only live in that city in which that locate ultimately selects. They'll be living in a wide variety of communities surrounding where that company ended up. And we've done, we have a model that shows that about 755 Maricopa residents over the last couple of years have been employed by locates, you know, in, either in Maricopa or in the southeast valley. So on the five-year trend on the revenue, again, we model this for, you know, every dollar that you invest as a community in the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, our model shows you get about $10 of direct revenue back. If you look at total revenues, and those are indirect multipliers and other multipliers, it's about $19 for every dollar that you invest in the organization. Current funding's around $27,000 based on the 2016 population. In our upcoming fiscal year, some of the action items that we are focusing and will continue to work on, you'll see, number one there, really are continuing to work on the analytical tools that we use to identify companies that may have an interest in expansion. We comb through a wide variety of reports and databases that show companies that have received funding or looking to grow, and that drives our marketing and business development efforts to really reach out, target those companies, to help, you know, showcase the opportunities for them in the Phoenix region. Again, we're looking at advancing some of our competitiveness priorities through regional collaboration and continually modeling what other states, cities, and regions are doing in their economic development efforts and to continually make sure that, you know, we're not being left behind there. We partner with our member communities to evaluate the planning that they need to do to make themselves competitive. And I'm very pleased to see, I mean, in terms of the housing need study that you're looking at, workforce, housing is a huge demand for many of the companies that we work with, and they almost always ask about it, you know, in terms of available housing options for them and their employees. So, you know, having available apartment buildings, having available single or housing units is key to your ability to attract employers to the area. Your study of the 347 corridor is vital, too, in terms of, you know, those companies, as they consider your market, your city, they're going to look at not only housing, they're going to look at labor availability, they're going to look at how can I get additional labor to the site, and having those key roadways and transportation corridors will be vital in attracting those kind of companies. We're looking at different ways to attract companies on social media, strategic media placement. We were talking the other day about the ability for us to identify a company's specific IP and target, you know, so if we're going after a specific company, we can target, anytime their employees are on the internet, they'll see pop-up ads from the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, probably like you've seen in Amazon. You know, if you look at shoes, and the next thing you know, you're on a different website and you see those shoes on. And we can do similar things with greater Phoenix messaging. We're doing that now with different conferences as well, so we can geographically code, you know, target an area around a specific conference and really promote a greater Phoenix message to those conference attendees. Last but not least, you know, we work with our edits, really heighten our recognition and to target industries identified by the Metro Phoenix Global Investment Plan and looking at those companies internationally that also we think will have great opportunities in this market and could see much success. In terms of activity, we're working with over about 300 active prospects right now. 20% of those are from international markets. 250 of the 300 roughly were new prospects in the last fiscal year. in the last fiscal year. So again, just some general numbers in terms of our prospect portfolio, and what those, those totals look like. So here's where they're coming from, and what, what types of businesses that we're seeing, you, we have a good, good blend of manufacturing and, and back-office type financial insurance companies, we have some headquarters office, other manufact, heavy manufacturing deals looking at the market as well. If you look at where they're coming from, we still like to think that California is one of our best marketing partners, as they continually raise, you know, costs, and, and make it very difficult for businesses to, to do business in California, and so we see a lot of interest from primarily the, the northern California market, but also southern California as well. Quick overview on the size of the clients in terms of office and industrial, won't go into all those numbers, but on the office side, we'll tend to see a lot of our office clients, technology employers that are under 50,000 square feet, on the industrial side, it's almost the opposite, we see a lot of companies that are looking at the market that are over 100,000 square feet, maybe large manufacturing, distribution, fulfillment-type projects. The one thing I do want to point out, on the office side, we have quite a, quite a bit of them, it's almost 90% of them are looking at existing product in your city center, you know, if, if there are some opportunities for office development, that'd be a great, a great ability for us to showcase the, the market as well, and the city. On the industrial side, you have about 60% to 80% looking at existing product. With that, I'm going to turn this part over to Tim, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, note at 7 o'clock, is it okay? Okay, I'll get this done in one minute, next slide please. The Smart Region is one of three elements of a new plan that we have called the Modern Economy Plan. This is basically a holistic plan moving forward, the mayor is obviously aware due to his engagement, but really quick, the other two parts of this are a workforce redesign, looking at where is our workforce coming for, coming from, and getting them better situated for the future, as well as infrastructure and economic to policy modernization, that is a topic for another day, but I wanted to briefly hit Smart Region here, as this is our, our new focus. I won't read it off here, but as you know, cities are the engines of economic growth, and you are challenging conventional thinking, the cities are the first line of defense, I'm speaking to elected officials, so you hear from your citizens and your constituents every day, and so it is what can impact them the most, and how we can learn, next slide please. This is the Smart Region vision, again, I won't go into it for the sake of time, but this is talking about developing a network and a communication system for the Greater Phoenix region, to include obviously the city of Maricopa. This is intentional planning, and this is about lessons learned, and so we want to get our elected officials, our economic development directors, on the same plane, and on the same path. If you have lessons to teach other communities, and vice versa, that's one thing that we want. When the mayor was a part of a discussion group on this, he brought up your use of purple pipes here, very smart intentional planning that not all cities are using, and actually, I would say this community is better situated for some implementation of this, being a newer community, in that you don't have a century of outdated infrastructure to literally burrow through in order to improve things. And so I'll give a few examples, next slide please. This is our, the basis of the model, and again, going back to your constituent services in the middle, enhancing quality of life, I know you are held responsible by all of your constituents in improving it. When we were doing some basic research, we were looking into how other communities throughout the US had done it, there were smaller communities in Idaho and Louisiana that didn't have proper cable access, well, they had cable access through national providers, that was, it just wasn't, it wasn't up to standard, it was 80 bucks a month, they put in intentional cabling, intentional infrastructure, in order to get their constituents those services, they were able to drop the rates from $80 a month for internet to $30 a month. That is just one example, another that shows, and what is, what important is, is government efficiency, and I know that, that might elicit some humor from some people, but that is one thing we're focusing on. City Chicago, they had a permit process that was online, which was great, but it required nine different submissions to nine different departments for one permit. I think we can all agree that that's excessive, and there's probably a better way to do that. Sure enough, they went through it, and they were able to centralize that to where you, as the user, went in, and you submitted one, one ticket, if you will, and it went through all the processes. Those are the things that cities are leading with, and so we want to ensure that we have everybody on the same plane in order to make Greater Phoenix, obviously, as good as, as possible, and because we have so many distinct communities here. So again, I just, this is a bit of a top-down, but it's something that is important to Chris Camacho and our organization, again, Mayor Price has been exceptional in input on that over the last year, and this upcoming year, we're going to be doing a lot involved with this, so I hope to come back, and hopefully brief you on some updates on this. Next slide. And again, just some of the benefits of collaboration, I probably don't have to tell you, but that, these are the, the topics that we have come up with, and again, info sharing, we have, you, communities have spent literally millions of dollars making some rope war choices, sometimes that's necessary, but what we want to do is, we want each community to interact and communicate in order to smooth that moving forward. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim, thank you Brad. Counsel, questions at this time of them, I know that on the Smart Region stuff, that's something that's really important, Denise and I have talked about that, the BFO was presented with something that is also, you know, we've talked about online permitting processes and those types of things, but we also have some, some planning that is being done from a streets perspective, Bill explained this a little bit earlier, very, very initial and, and high-level, but again, going down to the path of, of using fiber under the streets and, and preparing for the future of what will be required from a, from a smart city's perspective, so again, as it ties into this, I think it's a good thing, but any other questions at this time? Councilmember Wade?
How long have we been partners with you guys?
Since... The City Incorporated, 2003. I, you know, I don't have that fact in front of me, I've been here five years, and we've always been a community partner, so I can look into that and get back to you.
Eight, eight years, thank you. And, and how many jobs have we seen that have come to City of Maricopa from our relationship?
So we use the multiplier effect when evaluating our economic benefit related to our investments, so GPEC assists locates have created 755 region-wide for Maricopa residents, so our residents are employed in the Greater Phoenix area, and these are the specific jobs that have been brought to the region by GPEC.
So it's like me, we go to the job, but there's none here for me to come to, so just curious, how many we have, have, actually here in the city of Maricopa?
So one of the biggest challenges for the community has historically been our limited availability of sites, so I think one of the slides that Brad went over was what employers are looking for, office versus industrial, so that is our biggest challenge when we compete. So when we respond to proposals through GPEC, we're always submitting our projects that can be build-to-suit, and those are always going to delay a project, so typically, and I think Brad can talk to this a little bit more, typically, a user is going to look for a vacant site that is turnkey, and then they'll look at build-to-suit if that is an option, so I don't know, Brad, do you want to touch on that, or?
On the, on the industrial side, as I mentioned earlier, about 80% of our clients are, are looking for existing buildings first, but there's a pretty, depending on, on the type of company, if it's an industrial fulfillment, distribution company, they may be looking for big box, existing space, a lot of manufacturing companies though, because they're a fairly special purpose-built type of facilities, will be looking at land for build-to-suit sites, and I think that's, you know, a key for you guys, especially with some more properties coming online, maybe some rail-serve properties that we see more and more clients looking for in the market, and it's, it's, it's much harder, those are, those are hard locations to find. On the office side, it's, you know, I think a lot of companies see metro Phoenix as a place with a lot of available real estate, and, and many, many times when we get involved in a project, they're already kind of behind schedule, and they're about 90%, again, looking at existing product for office, and the ones that are willing to build are typically the very large corporate entities that have the time, and even those, they're looking for existing space for some temporary space to, to start hiring employees while their facility's being built.
That's your question?
Yeah, I think we're going to talk some more about it a little bit later, so I'll make a little...
Councilmember Brown? We have been told for at least eight years, maybe nine years, that Maricopa does not have shovel-ready sites. We were told that by Danielle, by Micah, now by Denise. Directly, GPEC has not brought a job to Maricopa. I know that Mayor does a great job as being the ambassador, but as far as direct jobs to Maricopa, that has not happened. No shovel-ready sites. The point is whether or not we want to continue our relationship, obviously, we feel our relationship is beneficial, I think most of my colleagues probably feel that way. But in terms of jobs indirectly, some of those residents who live here might have gotten those jobs anyway, that's not related to GPEC's effort. They've worked in corporations in Phoenix, Mesa, Maricopa County, that's where the jobs are, that's where the big cities are. They can give incentives, they have land. That's, there's the element we face, and the little, whether it's you guys, or whoever comes out every year making a pitch, it still remains the same. The city of Maricopa.
I'd have to look at the numbers, but we probably respond, we probably see anywhere between three to five leads on a weekly basis.
And what do those leads look like?
So they vary, it could be office, industrial, it could be, the lead could ask for proximity to an airport, proximity to a university, proximity to affordable housing, every lead that is generated is very unique to its sector, so, you know, it's not like GPEC is generating leads that are only specific to existing space, they are generating projects to the region that communities like Maricopa can compete in. So, does that answer the question?
Yeah, so I guess my follow-on question would be, for the $30,000 that we pay them a year, versus another economic development specialist at 60, 70, 80,000 dollars a year, you know, while, while my colleague has a, has a very, you know, insightful notification that everybody wants to see, you know, something done now, and having it here now, but, but at the same time, economic development doesn't work that way, so if going through a recession, coming out of a recession, dealing with a young city, finding availability of land, finding that right person that will help finance something, that pulls it out of the ground, will finance it, work together, and, and create a site that is, you know, ready to go, along with the work that the city's doing, if that person comes along through one of those leads, do we have the capability here to truly land that, that corporation, that headquarters, do we have the knowledge base on our staff to do the analytics and to take that all in-house for $30,000 a year?
So even if we were to generate lead on our own, which, that, that is the goal with our new business development specialists, we would still reach out to the Greater Phoenix Economic Council for their assistance with economic impact analysis. Typically, firms of that size are going to be looking for assistance in some, in some fashion, and they are also the conduit to the Arizona Commerce Authority, so we would still bring in all of the, the partners at the table. I think what you're trying to get to is really, you know, do we have the, the broadband today to do that on our own, and the fact is that we don't. We would not be able to generate this amount of leads, and this diverse amount of leads on our own, and I think that we're also forgetting all the other services that the organization offers to the city, and resources and education available to everyone, as well as to the staff.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I'm well aware of economic development, how it works. My point was and is, no direct jobs can be directed to what GPEC has done, and I know it takes years, and I also had mentioned, I know that we will continue to give them 30,000 a year, because that's what the majority wants. I'm pointing out a reality.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Wade?
So at nine years, if you will, if, what would be a break-even point for us? I mean, we say, okay, we've done this for nine years, we've received this, talk about new revenue opportunities, take a look at that and see what that means, what, what that has bought us, what would be a break-even point for us, to say that's enough?
I don't know if I know exactly how to answer the question, if we were to locate one firm through our partners, we would not only break even, we would come ahead because of the overall impact to the community, the jobs, the capital investment brought to, to the city, less people being put on the road, sent to the Greater Phoenix area, so, you know, we could continue to invest over the years, but just landing one firm would be a huge advantage, a huge win for the community.
So then in nine years, one firm, that would be a break-even, if you will, but if it doesn't happen, do we continue? So I mean, I understand what you're saying, you know, if we, you know, you hit the lottery, 15 million dollars, if you've been playing it for 15 years and you hit it, you hit it, but if you don't, do you keep playing it?
Well, I, I don't, I respectfully disagree that we're not playing the lottery with being a community partner with GPEC, this is a strategic relationship, enhancing our ability to do business development for the city of Maricopa, so I, I understand where you're coming from, and I really think that it's a matter of sitting down and, and looking at the numbers, and understanding, you know, what does it look like if the city were to locate a firm utilizing office, and what sort of jobs would that bring, and what is the benefit to the community overall, or what would it look like to locate an industrial firm here, so I'd be more than happy to sort of dissect the numbers, and analyze, you know, what is that number, that, that sweet spot where we break even, to make the investment digestible.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith?
So the way that I look at this is that our economic development strategic plan has many, many facets, and GPEC membership is just one of those facets, and in sitting down with Denise, I understand the not, the un, the non-tangible benefits that you get from having that relationship, and in our discussions, I understand all of the resources that you are able to gather from them, the data that you're able to gather from them in preparation for any of our visits that we have, from businesses that may be interested in us, or our economic development trips. So I see that as one facet, I see our efforts going forward to develop the Australia gin, just for the sole purpose of having shovel-ready sites, and developing the area around City Hall, just as we talked about tonight, and the area around Copper Sky, and having those shovel-ready sites for the businesses that we've identified in our strategic plan for economic development. So I see all of those aspects, I see us being really pretty proactive in bringing those together, and trying to find the best avenue for making the city of Maricopa have these high-paying jobs, and, you know, I, I don't want to take one little piece out of the many facets, I want to keep them all together, because I think it's a very cohesive plan, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Gussi.
Brad, question for you, how many municipalities that are GPEC members are 14 and 1/2 years old?
Yeah, I would have to say zero, but...
Okay, okay. I, I have to agree with my colleague in that, I, I think it's an ongoing process, I mean, for those of you who've been around in Maricopa, it's taken us 10 years plus to bring an overpass out of the ground, and you've heard this council and previous councils talk a lot about having a seat at the table, but that's a two-way process, you know, our return on investment, yeah, we might not be able to claim a win per se in terms of landing jobs, or landing a corporation here, but without those resources, we wouldn't even be at the table, we wouldn't be part of the conversation, because we would be an unknown quantity. I also have to applaud the efforts of MITA, the Maricopa Economic Development Alliance, for their marketing efforts in the last year, I've seen more hits and more stories about Maricopa, people are paying attention to us now. I can remember in this room when it would've been big news, that we made the weather, as a, as a pot, spot-on-the-weather report, so I, I think it's, for me, it's a long-term investment, but going to ICSC, being involved with GPEC, being involved in MITA, and all the other groups that we belong to, it's part of a process, we have to make an investment of ourselves and our resources in order to get some gain. I guarantee you, when we get that one big win, and I think we're close, there will be some celebrating here, but I appreciate what GPEC does for us, and I appreciate that we have a seat at the table, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gussi.
I want to quantify this, you have had a slide there that mentioned 700...
You have had a slide there that mentioned 755 Maricopans got jobs. Are you telling us that if it wasn't for GPEC's efforts, those 755 Maricopa residents would not have jobs or would not have received the jobs that GPEC brought?
No, I'm not saying that they wouldn't have jobs, but I, what our model shows is that 755 city Maricopa residents have jobs at a company that GPEC assisted with a new location in Metro Phoenix.
So if it wasn't for GPEC's effort, these jobs wouldn't exist?
Yes.
So we are getting something for our buck. We can say that.
Yeah, I can't say that they wouldn't be employed, but I can say that with our efforts, you know, that company has chosen a location in the region and your residents have found employment with them.
And how do you gather this data, do you know?
It's done with an economic study. We can send you more information on that. I can't provide, I don't have all the details with me right now, but it's a study that, you know, we've worked with the county on and several other economic development consultants and putting together to showcase kind of regional impacts for economic development agencies.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, councilmember Wade?
So that's more a statement, I think, than a question, you know. So I quite frankly agree that we need to make sure that we have every opportunity with every service, every organization, everyone there on our side to help us to grow and develop. I'm very clear about that, but I also want to make sure, you know, that we're good stewards of our finances as well, not that, not that I'll be a part of GPEC, GPEC is not, you know, because I do agree with that. But I think sometimes we need to air that out and to make sure that that conversation is out in the open, so that those that are looking back and saying, what are we doing, what we're doing, then it's important to have that conversation, I think.
Any other questions, council, this time? Okay. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We will go ahead and close our work session here. We're running a little behind schedules, but we're going to take a five-minute break, so if you will bear with us there, and then we'll reconvene for our regular work, our regular session. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Is there a second? Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? That motion carries. We'll adjourn for five minutes and reconvene. Thanks.